Day Ward, put in that new bridge, you put sidewalks in.
I think, yeah.
About the roundabout Tyler and Salem. Is it, is that anywhere in the? We can, you're out there, out there's the man.
He's got the whole list, it was in the paper too.
Tyler and Salem.
Tyler and Salem, what about?
Are you, we got a roundabout planned there?
Uh, we don't know yet.
Something that get away.
Urbey, Urbey and Salem.
The Urbey and Salem, Tyler and Salem.
If you look at the, if you look at the list here, um, anywhere that it says, and I'll be explaining this again on camera, I'm sure, um, under Impact B projects, anywhere that it says, uh, roundabout, there's a, and there's a double asterisk, here it says intersection improvement, there's a double asterisk. Well, yeah, if you go to the back, underneath the double asterisk, well, did not make it.
Was it sent to us?
It looks like it's missing a page, to me.
Give a list of roundabouts.
Yeah, a list of roundabouts that we're gonna do a traffic study on.
Tyler and Salem, one of them.
I believe so.
I don't know if Mr. Hopkins is gonna be in that.
Yeah, I'll pause it.
I'll have to limp through the, uh, planning stuff, so y'all just bear with me.
Police, is police in here?
Yes. Do something wrong, say, "What's wrong?"
Gentlemen, how are y'all?
Hey, Mark.
We're good.
Good, big good.
Yeah. I got enough money, got a boat for number eight.
Know who we are.
Like we said today.
It's hot down, it's gonna be pretty warm over there.
Oh, I bet.
My hair's been out all day. Really?
Much better location. I've always, always been ready.
You've been bad out there?
What's that? Oh, don't tell me.
Oh, yeah, they canceled court.
They canceled court?
Yeah.
It's Friday court.
This is where we used to have all our council meetings.
It was bigger, yeah.
Yeah, this one or this one was gone, I can't remember. Yeah.
It wasn't that way.
Well, tell me about this.
It went both ways.
Tell me about this, some packed houses, there's some packed houses on those guys.
That's where I took my civil service test over to the police department, yeah? Down, down tablet, huh?
Who's, who's the fire chief, Conway Fire Department? What's the fire department telephone number?
She said when it printed, it printed in the wrong word, she thought it was here.
Hey Chuck, we don't have one of that.
I don't have it.
I can show you mine, it's on here.
Okay.
I've, I've got it electronically.
How many pages is yours? Let me see, just leave the last page.
Nine pages.
Yeah, it's, it's missing the last page, but.
So, here's the.
We can't wait to read.
There's no point in reading, we're doing the first reading up there.
Yeah, 'cause I, I've got that, yeah. I've got that up there.
Take a look in the table and fill in the details.
On Salem Road from Prince to Tyler, it's, you know, everything's been a lead back. Hey, no more. Not a whole lot, but in there, clock. It is hot.
It is hot.
I'm talking, we were shopping at Walmart the other night. What? Smile, maybe he didn't have a smile on his face. Oh. When I saw you the other night. At Walmart? You just opened up a Walmart on the weekend, the school starts. Thirty more, remember?
I made a mistake ago, bro. I forgot that you said movie weekend.
Hey, Charlie.
Yeah, don't go anywhere, yeah. Just Tyler here. I was gonna have a meeting over at the other Thursday classes.
It's time to be rolling, I'm gonna go over there.
I lost my phone, feels pretty good in here.
Mark, I think you and I can just handle this.
Is it in your phone?
My wife has. Hey, Mary.
Hi.
I thought you could hang with me.
Yep.
She, how are you?
Good.
Great.
So, are you guys going to San Diego? I can't go, I can't go.
I will go.
I want to, I, I love those trips.
I wasn't gonna go, but my sister lives up there, so. Been seeing her about twenty-five years.
I wanna go see that.
And talk to her.
Indiana, are you gonna go?
I was like scheduled for summertime, which is really, summertime is really hard.
It's pretty quick trip.
Oh, yeah, it is a quick end.
Well, goodness, Southwest flies, we need a full state.
Straight flying? We're, we're planning on having our council meeting.
How many's going so far, you know?
Four.
Are you going, Mark, to Salem?
Well, I'm not coming to San Diego that night, there's this one. Already bought my ticket.
I gotta stay here all night.
Well, I figured if, if you plus, and then with the other ones, we're going, hmm, that's why I took some.
I don't think it's a big table all this time.
Well, it's not October.
It's the first one.
Go.
Go, we'll see, we'll be fine.
I threw away September.
Got all September.
I, I have done that, I have done that.
I just, I just, that's the second time I've done it.
I, I'm right here with you.
Did you steal my agenda? Yes, he did.
Jeff, you're working that back.
Where, um, you never got it back? You never got your, your paper back?
No, I had an agenda.
Oh, agenda, oh.
Are you sorry to you? It was missing a page or something.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Dave.
Hello, Dave.
Hello.
Excuse my language.
Police have printed out copies of that page, it's missing. Okay, the, the roundabouts are College, sorry, College and Ferris, Tyler and Salem, Prince and Country Club, College and Prince, Prince and Hogan, and Salem and everything.
Yes.
I think I sold this for you guys, lady. Sorry.
Oh, you man.
There's a number of these.
There are a lot of them.
What did I do? I mean, you're welcome, how did I do? Oh, Bologna, yeah, yeah, they get you taken care of?
Yeah.
It's a deal.
Are you going to Indiana? You can go. Other applications.
I like that printout.
Oh, man, something I can read.
Yes.
Print the whole thing.
That has the.
I've not heard directly from them. That's great, but I, I know, and I know, there's several people that ask me how to like do it, so I know.
Now, I think, I just.
Doesn't have all the information on it, it's just supplemental.
This is more like.
This is. This is just the number, right? It doesn't tell you.
Right, so, the ballot's still out too, or third day.
Which is why they didn't put it in the agenda.
Email.
Or email log. Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I think it's gonna have.
Just going to the, first of all, you know, there's the one that make it a town, anything.
Oh, there it is.
Was it the, the last year?
It must be, it must be the bigger list than the one for our legislature. Very strong. I think, I think, other things too, you know, push membership, but, uh, yeah, I think so. All things will help a lot.
And it slipped me last year.
Yeah.
Can they look into?
Yeah.
And that, that being the basic.
I'm gonna tap those comments.
Either left on the table.
Basic table on the steel. Send it to both of them. It could be a lot stronger, this suggestion, because they just do it, they just.
I'm good, how are you?
We'll watch a fire soon.
I can't, are you going?
We will, from what I understand, we will have a warm here at six-thirty, so let's go ahead and start this back.
Now, I can't wait any longer.
Yeah.
We got Wes.
Fields, I just saw field. I didn't get a note about it either. One of the agendas missing a page.
Watch my.
That's the one. The only thing different is that it's not missing the last page.
Thank you. I got Wes, I got a voice back.
Hey, apparently I was just calling you, I was on the phone with you just there.
We get started, um, this committee meeting, back when the sales tax passed, um, I got with Finley and asked him to put together a list to present to you guys. Uh, it's based on science, it's based on the, uh, street management, it's based on some common sense, and, uh, it's a list of streets that, that, using that, uh, criteria that we thought were important for us to fix. But, it's entirely up to y'all to what we wanna do, I think you all agree that it's important that we do what we said we'd do with the sales tax money, and I, I know we're gonna do that, so it's no concern. But, there are some, uh, areas that we can re-prioritize our streets, and, uh, and put the money where you guys think it'll be used, used best, and will make the greatest impact. With that, you may ask Mr. Finley to come out?
All right.
To present what you have found, with your research.
I know ordinarily I would stand, but if you don't mind me to sit so I can read.
Sure.
That's okay. Um, you've got two handouts now, the first one is what was in the packet, plus an additional page. In case you've already read through the packet, the additional page lists the roundabouts that are up for consideration. On, uh, so let me just start at the beginning, uh, this is what the mayor asked me to do, uh, really, right after the sales tax passed, we both, it became apparent to both of us that we needed a good plan for how to spend the additional money, since we had a lot more money coming our way. Uh, and I, I took the liberty of putting this together for the street sales tax, the street fund, the impact fee, and the page you go sales tax. Um, so this document is just numbers, and largely that's for me, just to make sure we don't go bankrupt somewhere. Uh, this is the actual plan. So here, is it there? Let me ask your question.
How are you?
Just got a little more. Um, so in, in this document, uh, they are arranged by funding source. Street sales tax projects is the first one, um, street fund projects is the second one, impact fee projects are listed third on page four, and what I wanted to point out is that, uh, those last two items under impact fee have that double asterisk. And that last page, which you didn't have, shows that the plan is to perform a traffic study at each of these, one, two, three, four, five, six intersections, to determine where a roundabout would be most beneficial. And, the impact fee has enough money to build one in twenty-twenty and one in twenty-twenty-two.
Finley, what is this candy award analysis?
Okay, so, at Urbey, Salem and Urbey is the only one of these that it doesn't, is not currently signalized. And, uh, there's not, I mean, so generally, when a traffic engineer puts in a four-way stop, or an all-way stop for a signal, there is a warrant, a scientific study that's done to make sure that it's needed. And that's called warrant analysis. There does not exist a warrant analysis for a roundabout, so my proposal is to do a warrant, an all-way stop warrant. And, if it meets the warrant for an all-way stop, then it would probably be rated pretty high, uh, from a safety perspective. But if it doesn't meet the, the warrant for an all-way stop, then it would probably be rated pretty low, uh, from a needs perspective. The traffic study will consider safety, uh, congestion, and, uh, possibly some other factors as well, maybe economics, maybe even public opinion, we're not exactly sure yet. But I know that for sure it'll consider both safety and congestion. And, uh, so that's what makes that one just a little bit different than the others. So, the other thing that is not completely spelled out in here is where the overlays are gonna, gonna be, some of them are listed. For instance, uh, the very first thing under street sales tax projects, there's, there's several, um, overlays listed on the first page under construction. The ones that I know about, that we have already decided are either important, or for instance, on this list here, we're gonna have to apply for some state aid money. Uh, Tyler Street is in here also, I think, under street fund, uh, in two thousand nineteen. Yeah, I see it under, on page three, under two thousand nineteen street fund overlay, so there are some that I called out, because we've already identified them, either because we've applied for a grant, or because they were on a previous list, but we, for this year, but we didn't have enough money, so they rolled over, things like that. But in general, I've not attempted to identify every overlay for the next four years. Uh, largely because asphalt conditions can change too much over a four-year period, uh, two years is as long as most people would wanna go with projections like that. So, we'll, the idea is, we'll, we'll decide what the overlays are gonna be a year ahead of time, but we've already kind of established money for them, uh, so we know, so make sure everything stays fiscally constrained. The other thing I wanna say is that these cost estimates that are in here are very rough. Um, I obviously didn't have time to put together, put together a detailed cost estimate for every one of these projects, so these are, some of these are a little bit shooting from the hip. Um, I'll update this spreadsheet every year at least, uh, and as we have detailed cost estimates, then those numbers will get finer.
People are always, people constantly ask us about several streets. We've got Tyler lined out for twenty-nineteen, we have, uh, Stanley Russ lined out for twenty-nineteen, is that correct, Finley?
Uh, Stanley Russ will begin in twenty-nineteen, it is on, uh, it's second on the front page, actually.
And then, uh, Donaghy will be twenty-twenty, and the reason Donaghy's down to twenty-twenty is we're giving Conway Corporation time to go in and work on their infrastructure and things that they need to do, so that, once we pave it, we're not going back in there and have to cut streets if it's waterized, thing like that, it's really good working relationship. There are several other projects coming up to state, with the state, or possibilities with state, with stip money, that y'all need to make decisions on. Uh, one is Hark Rider from Bruce to Oak, uh, the main cost there is gonna be by Conway Corporation, when they first did a, took a look at that job, it was going to, uh, cost us much to go to the sewer, because it was in the middle of the road. Hopefully, the highway department has rethought that, and would possibly let us, let Conway Corporation leave the sewer in the middle there if we need to. That, what do we figure that's gonna cost, Finley? If Conway Corporation, of course, that, the first estimate, seven point five million, what was the city's estimate on that?
Uh, well, the state's estimate on utility relocation was seven point six million dollars. The construction cost estimate is three point six million dollars, and the right-of-way cost estimate is one and a half million dollars. The Conway Corporation has put some work into a detailed cost estimate, and they think the utility relocation will actually cost, uh, right now, they're at three and a half million. Uh, that doesn't include, uh, gas or, uh, AT&T, but, you know, somewhere around four million, which is a lot less than seven point six million dollars. So, I've asked, the mayor's asked, uh, Brett Carroll and his team to, uh, make sure that they've got a fine point on those cost estimates. They're also gonna look at any potential cost savings they, they have, and maybe how they can help share in that cost. They're gonna give us a letter, uh, and we're gonna put that together with what the city's willing to do as well, and send that back to the state with the hope that they'll put it on, on a future stip.
Another project.
Salem.
Salem, I'm, I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
Another, uh, program we have working with state running RDOT is, uh, roundabouts on Day Ward, they're gonna study on that and see what the cost will be on that. That would be from, uh, Hark Rider to, to the interstate, those two intersections. And then, they're also looking at a plan, uh, they're gonna re, bring their study back up on a bypass that would go from around the Scott Hall area, Squirrel Hill, Hill area, to, uh, Pickles Gap. Gap building out there, so, they're working on that, and then, about four or five years from now, Finley, they're gonna do a, am I saying this right, a flyover, or flyby, what do you call it?
Yeah, that's on the current stip, and it'll actually be even sooner than that, because the current stip runs through twenty-twenty-two, I think, and they have got construction money, uh, in the stip for the interchange at I forty and Skyline. Uh, so, they haven't designed it yet, so I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but I would imagine that probably the current southbound left turn to go to south on I forty will become a flyover, so you don't have to, so you can avoid this.
A flyover, so I did say it right.
You did, yeah.
There you go. Uh, but, getting back to the state money, those are some of the costs that we can put back, and if y'all choose to invest in the state, we can do that, if not, if y'all wanna move to somewhere else, we can do that. Those are the projects that are up ahead of the state. Mary asked about Salem Road, as I said, Tyler Street is twenty-nineteen, Stanley Russ, if we allow Finley's crew to do the construction on Stanley Russ, am I saying this right, Finley, it saves twenty-one point five, possibly two, is that?
Yeah, the numbers that are in here right now for Stanley Russ, uh, which are on the first page, the second item on the first page, uh, and we save a little bit of money on design if we designed it, so, you know, all of it really, so, a couple hundred thousand dollars, if we designed it, the real cost savings would be in construction, and I think we can anticipate that the construction cost would be fifty to sixty percent of that number, so, yeah, one and a half to two million dollars in savings. And, and, I, I plugged it in, I, I, I put this spreadsheet together, uh, some months ago, and wasn't really sure at the time, I didn't have a really good feel for what we were gonna be building, and then, uh, also trying to get a grasp of where we are in staffing and maintenance and all that. It, it would certainly put us, make us busy, but I think we could handle building Stanley Russ and House, uh, so, there's some potential savings there.
And then Donaghy in twenty-twenty, and then, from there, we prioritized, uh, Nutter Chapel Road, which brings us back to Salem. This council will have to decide if y'all want to, if we, if Finley does the building over there, we take, what do we have figures, Nutter Chapel, Finley's?
Three point, let me find it, forgive me.
That's okay.
Three point two millions.
So, we may have about five million dollars in savings there, if we, if Finley does the building, and y'all reallocate the money to, uh, Salem Road. We could do that, we're also, uh, Candy's working on a grant with Finley right now to, uh, get a grant to replace the bridge, which, we really can't do anything to replace that bridge, otherwise we've got a choke point. But this would allow us, if y'all choose to do that, to, uh, redo Salem from College to Day Ward Drive with sidewalks, so it would help pedestrian pass, pedestrian bicycle and vehicular traffic.
Do, do you have Salem construction in here besides the bridge and where?
Uh, not the, I have, where is that?
It's on, I know the bridge is.
Yeah, so, um, so the design, the design number that's plugged in there is to design the entire thing, not just the bridge, that's why it's so high.
But what, it's a construction cost?
The construction's cost, however, is just the bridge, and that, that wouldn't happen as it stands right now until twenty-twenty-two. Either way, I don't think anything's gonna happen until twenty-twenty-two, because if you look at the numbers, Donaghy and Stanley Russ take up the majority of the money. And I'm actually a little bit nervous about my cost estimate on Donaghy, it couldn't be higher, we've got a lot of question marks on drainage.
What we do with state money, press money, if you're a fourth.
So, it would, it would, it would go towards Salem, if the council chose to apply that to Salem, it would, it would just, what, Salem is gonna be probably a seven million dollar project. So, if you look, if you look at where in twenty-twenty-two, I've only got about a million dollars left, to apply the Salem Road in twenty-twenty-two, that's the bridge. We applied another one and a half to two million dollars on that, if we design and construct Stanley Resident House, and then, if we decided to push Nutter Chapel, uh, to following year, then that's another three million, so we might have enough to build it in twenty-twenty-two. If we didn't do any of those things, then it would be twenty-twenty-three, at least.
That seven million is just from College to Day Ward?
Yes.
Including the bridge. And we also like.
Nothing north of Prince.
Yeah, we'd also like to take our sidewalks to Prince Street, tie in sidewalks on Prince Street.
I, I can't imagine it lasting that long, I mean, it's in the four, right now.
Well, let's, let's dig a little deeper into some of this stuff, so, what are we talking about doing on Salem? You talking about widening it, adding that pass in the bridge, I mean, it's gonna be a choke point, is that even, we're gonna add lanes?
Well, the, we designed the road first, and the bridge would follow, that's the reason that I've got for my design number, I'm planning on designing the entire thing, so you kinda need to figure out what the road's gonna look like, and then the bridge matches it.
Yeah, I mean, it's already a two-lane bridge, so if we're not gonna widen it past two lanes, I don't understand what that would hold up for.
Well, the bridge isn't, one of the problems with the bridge, bridge is it's not pedestrian friendly, so a pedestrian on the north side of the bridge can't walk to the south side of the bridge without getting out of the trap.
Are you thinking something?
There'll be an underpass.
There will be for the, for the trail. Uh, but we still need a way for somebody to get, for a pedestrian to get across the street.
Your preliminary thoughts on Salem as well, leaving it two-lane?
No, I think it probably would be wise to make it three-lane at least.
With a turn and lane?
Yes, uh, and, uh, and, and then we need to figure out, the problem with Salem is there's only sixty feet of right-of-way through there right now, and it warrants at least eighty, in fact, we just, in the most recent master street plan up, they, we made it a major arterial, which is a hundred foot of right-of-way, but, if we built a major arterial through there, then we'd be in some people's back doors. Um, and so, uh, at one point in time, uh, early on, years ago, there was a plan to make it four lanes, uh, but that does not leave much room for pedestrians or cyclists. Uh, I think it could work well, I'll probably do some sort of traffic setting before I, before I make an official recommendation, but I think we could do three lanes, and then do wide sidewalks, instead of doing bike lanes, and put the bicyclists on the sidewalks beyond the curve to leave all three lanes for traffic. Um, we could, we could build it for, we could build it for four lanes, uh, the problem with building it for four lanes is that, then at the signal, there is one signal in the middle, and at that signal, then that four lane, fourth lane, anytime somebody's trying to make a left turn there, it just gets, turns into a turn lane, so you're kinda wasting money on the pavement there.
Do you know how many, what the car count is per day on Salem at any, at Bon Harbor?
I can tell you in five minutes.
I was just wondering, compared to some of the other roads we can move up on the list, or is higher on the list to get done, like Nutter Chapel, Stanley Russ, all those, what, you know, what are those number of trips per day for those roads compared to Salem Road?
I understand, I understand.
So, you're thinking not Stanley Russ?
No, I'm thinking if Stanley Russ could withstand maybe pushing out to Salem state and moving Salem up, I know.
Oh, I hear that a lot, like more complaints about Salem Road than any road in Conway.
I get Tyler, Tyler's.
Yeah, Tyler is bad today.
The highway, when, when county built the bypass, it was there, it really put the pressure on.
Yeah.
And Mr. Gare's not gonna speak to us, we don't know Stanley Russ.
But it looks like we're, we're kinda limited with, uh, grant for a bridge for twenty-twenty anyway, at, at the best, earliest.
For Salem?
Get, get grant for the bridge.
Where, where are we on the grant process?
Uh, I don't know right now.
We're kinda in a holding pattern at the moment.
Um, it's gotta go through the state, uh, Department of Transportation and their understaffed.
But even at that day, that I think it was on the books for twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, yeah.
To do Salem, which is, I can't imagine with another traffic, with the schools and all.
Let me ask a dumb question, would it be just a complete waste of money, at least overlay Salem in the interim, which part of it?
Uh, well, I guess that depends on, in, I, that depends on your definition of waste, I presume.
It's gonna be four or five years before we get a bridge built, I don't think it's a big waste.
Yeah. Overlay from the bridge to the roundabouts.
It's a rough cost.
They smoothed it out.
Um, give me a moment, I'll answer that question. Let me see how long it is.
Hey, Salem, north of Prince to Tyler's tough, in the evening. Well, in the morning.
And, that, part of, part of the reason that, that I'm not sure if it makes sense to widen Salem beyond three-lane is because the entirety of it north of there is three-lane. Um, and I don't see the city having money to change that for quite some time. Um, because it doesn't make sense to change it until we can build the other half of the railroad bridge, and I don't remember what that cost, but we're talking about tens of millions of dollars to widen the entirety of Salem to, to four or five lanes.
That, that warrant that Prince is not even on the radar, going?
It's not, it's not in this plan.
So, we have, I guess, that is a major arterial. How much right-of-way do we have up there, Larry, is there more right-of-way north of Prince than?
There, there could be, yeah.
Seems like all the houses on West Side are set way back.
There's a few that are.
The ones on the.
Sort of close, yeah.
But I think the, the, the thing that makes the stretch south of College so important to people, I think, is that, mostly the fact that it doesn't have any sidewalks. Uh, yeah, it's near, it's right next to.
Yeah, and that's a, that's the way a lot of people go, to go Little Rock, so they come down College and then look through the two new roundabouts now? So they come down College and then look at the two new roundabouts now.
Okay, so that's, that section of Salem gets eleven thousand cars a day, which is high for a two lane road. But less than, less than Prince Street.
I'd be curious to know.
It's about the same as College, actually.
I'd be curious to know what it sits around about Sunday. Because it's higher than that.
That's the south of College.
About north of Prince?
North of Prince is thirteen thousand.
And what was it, south of College?
Eleven thousand.
So it's more north.
People hit the bypass. They hit the bypass and then go, and go as railway as well.
If you're going south of Salem, it's crazy.
Roundabout is very much.
Man, I could complain about that all the time.
Arabians. Trying to turn left. Salem, it's almost impossible. You might as well go the way, all the way to that neighborhood.
That's what, that's what a lot of people start to, man.
Yeah, hit the line.
Any of the night rides around there, if you got into common of saying that's.
So Finley, in 2019, there's no roundabout on schedule anywhere?
People come off the hill.
Uh, no. Well, aside from the fact that the Donaghy improvement will include four, I think, but that's not starting until 2020.
So next summer, no roundabout construction?
Say again?
Next, no roundabout construction in 2019, that's correct.
So the state money that we could potentially get for different projects, we don't know about and we're all going to decide.
Okay, so the.
Because we're surveying, we've quite got a map.
Yeah, the state has asked us, kind of unofficially, neither, neither the Dave Ward from I-40 to Harp Rider project, nor the Harp Rider from Bruce to Oak project are officially in their transportation plan right now. They're, they have money to study them and design them and not to construct. And the messages that we've gotten from them is if we will partner with them to a substantial degree, then they could probably get those added into their plan. And it's kind of a, it's kind of like buying a car.
So it could be one or both, or depending on how much they.
It, it could be. The number that's been thrown out is seven, for the city to put in seven million dollars for both of those projects. And so that's why that's the number that I've got reserved from.
So if they just didn't do the I-30 project, we could have that money?
You know, unfortunately.
I know.
They get, yeah, it is. They get to decide how they spend their money on this.
So five days a week, two hours a day, we're paying that much money?
We went to a meeting with the R.D., Jack and Finley and I and Ken, and they proposed just about this. It had it on the radar one time, what, ten, ten, twelve years ago, seven years ago.
Harp Rider, at least that long ago, yes.
Yeah, because we've talked about Harp Rider for a while.
And I think Harp Rider's more a safety issue than anything else. We most certainly have, going to have to approve all this tonight. We've got time to look at it. It just gives us.
This is great.
Gives us something to look at, think about.
Tyler next year, what are we doing to Tyler next year?
We're going to overlay the entirety of it from Washington to where the curb and gutter ends, which is at Sina Drive.
Some of that is a dig out and replace.
Yeah, the section, there's some, there's several thousand feet, actually. Oh, maybe, maybe around a thousand feet of total travel that's underneath that pavement on the west end, West Ahogan. It's just no good. So we're going to have to probably tear up the pavement, swolcement the base to make sure that we're not just throwing away money there. On that note, I think probably two hundred thousand dollars or so, a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars would overlay Salem. Since somebody asked.
That would probably money well spend.
It's, you know, I would, I would actually try to talk you out of it if it weren't for the fact that we're, we know we're going to rebuild it. Because Salem's in bad enough shape that if we thought, an overlay won't fix it long term. It's, it's, it's not sections of it are lost that need to be rebuilt. But since we know we're going to rebuild it in the future anyway, if we wanted to overlay, we can.
We were talking about 2022, is that correct?
For that overlay? Well, it's not.
Built for rebuild.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes.
Long as we overlay, it's going to be first one next spring.
What is the cost of overlay, did you figure that?
Two hundred thousand.
That's all?
Overlay's a lot cheaper.
We've got from now throughout the winter, because there's no time to get town, so we, you know, but we've got to kind of think about this, something we need to think about this, this winter, if we're doing that. We'll see how some of this plays out. Stanley Russ, what are we doing to Stanley Russ in 2019?
Essentially, it, it, it's an improvement. Some of it, some of it will have to be rebuilt, some of it we can overlay and kind of notch and widen. But it'll, we'll add curb and gutter as you, as you come up the hill from the east side, we're going to add curb and gutter to the west side of the road, which is where the hill goes up. And then the east side of the road will have a wide shoulder. And then as you get to the top of the hill, it continue west, the curb and gutter will flip to the north side and wide shoulder on the south side. Does that make sense? So it'll be, but essentially, it's a full, it's a full improvement. And section of it, sections of it will have to be rebuilt, but some sections can be saved.
Okay, thank you. Now, Donaghy 2020, you mentioned four roundabouts, what are we looking there?
Yeah, so I, I don't know, of course, because I, we haven't started on the design yet, but I don't know for sure that it will include roundabouts at all these intersections, but at least considering roundabouts at all of the intersections from and including Prince to Dave Ward, with the exception of Robin Street, because it's a T-intersection and there's not room without buying state property, which is tremendously difficult to put a roundabout at that. So that would be roundabouts at Prince and Caldwell and Bruce and College. And that's the reason that that section, that that's so high. Because a lot of that cost in those roundabouts.
And this always comes up anytime we discuss, Donaghy, you know, you see a bigger word about the Memorial of Oaks, we will not be taking.
Well, and I, and I know there was a lot of conversation about not being around about at Bruce and Donaghy because there's so much pedestrian traffic there.
Yeah, we still have it.
I mean, that might be one not to build.
Yeah, and I think that's one that if we did put in a roundabout there, we would probably put flashing beacons at the, at the crosswalks or something like that, just to acknowledge the high pedestrian traffic. But we can model, we'll probably, when we do that one, we'll probably model pedestrians, which normally isn't done. Normally, when a roundabout traffic study is done, it's just cars that are modeled. But we'll probably model pedestrians there as well. The other thing I'll say about that is initially, initially, I, we believed and hoped that we'd be able to just overlay Donaghy. But the geotech, the initial geotech report is telling us that, that we can't. And so the, the options that have been given us are to tear up the old pavement, swolcement the base, putting the pavement back, which is tremendously expensive, or overlay the existing road and on top, on top of the existing pavement. The problem with that is then we overlay the gutter, but the existing gutters through there are only four inch roll curb. And then you're only left with two inches of curb left. I'm thinking probably the cheapest thing is going to be to actually build new curbs and bring the road out rather than rebuild the entire road. But we're not sure.
What about Market Street? I don't see that mentioned anywhere here.
It should be in there somewhere.
Somewhere?
I've got.
The Understreet fund projects, same?
Just on Van Ralke.
Got seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in there from Market Street.
Just on Van Ralke, right at first of the year.
What page?
Page two.
Yeah, it's on page two, Understreet Fund, it's the second bullet.
Okay. All right, so we're looking, is that Collin Corp. rather than doing work right now?
Yes.
And so we're thinking 2019, we'll start doing some of our work?
Yes.
Very good.
Actually, we could have done it a little sooner, but the downtown partnership wanted us to hold off after the Christmas season. So that's why we're going to wait till the first of the year.
That's cool. What about the, much talked about, much anticipated detention pond slash park slash?
I saw that somewhere.
Is that going to be, is going to happen?
It's, it's in there under, on the spreadsheet, it's called Old Scrapyard Detention. It's under the page, you go sales types. Second bullet.
Second bullet, where?
Yeah, the second bullet on page seven. And it doesn't match the spreadsheet actually on, I've got, I've actually got, I apologize for the mistake. I've got, no, no, I don't, I guess I don't have.
You just have the design.
I just have design in there, I don't have construction in there. But there's room for that. You might notice I've got five hundred thousand a year, dollars a year put into drainage maintenance. I don't really know where I'm going to spend that. And I remember now that I'm looking at it, I remember noticing that I hadn't plugged any money in for the old scrapyard and that's where that could come from.
Now, unless there's a reason to keep waiting for something, I'd like to get that done next year.
Like an issue, which is out of all?
Get that building that we told downtown, we're going to do that for drainage for years and have it, so.
The ground feeling.
I mean, unless there's a reason to, to wait for Collin Corp. to do more or something, I mean, I'd say play it in next year somehow, some way.
We can start, I actually had planned on it, since I, I haven't spent, you know, a whole lot of money on drainage maintenance this year, because we've been doing a lot of it ourselves. I think we can, we can sustain going ahead and get started on the design this year, or if not this year, for certainly next year.
And Finley, on this list of 2019 Street Fund overlays on page two, how, how far on this list is going to be, including pretty much most of those?
All of it except for College Avenue, which we waited on until after the roundabout was built.
People have commented about this too, but they have noticed that we are doing some of the roads and all that, so.
Good.
And the roundabout has been a big hit up on the hill.
Yeah.
Glad to hear that.
Looks like you'll be busy for a while.
Yes, sir.
That's good.
This is a good, a good plan to first all look at, and y'all make the decisions on what you want to do. Arthur Grimes said we have to the first of the year to figure out what we want to do. Finley can probably get some, of course, some solid numbers on traffic flows and costs between now and then. And we'll probably talk about it December, it works for everybody. In the meantime, make notes, if you've got questions, call Finley or myself.
Well, I know you shared, or somebody shared with me that, that sidewalks are going to be built from Gatlin Park down to Washington, down to Tyler.
Yes, actually, the engineer that's working on that for me came in my office just before I came here and told me that it doesn't look like we're going to have enough money to go all the way to Washington. So we're going to start with, and we'll probably, I think Jacob will probably build those, or we'll probably build those in-house. That's something that he can do with a small group of people. If you told me it needed to happen right away, then I'd hire it out. But we'd spend, save a lot of money if we do that ourselves. So I think we'll probably start with Gatlin Park to Donaghy and then see how much is left in the fund. And if we want to make another project of the library to Washington, we can do that.
And then I know we had talked about previously, waiting to see how the new roundabouts on College worked to determine, do we still need to widen College or not, hoping that we don't have to widen College, right? But we still need sidewalks on College at some point. But I think waiting to see, you know, you don't want to build sidewalks and then have to widen the street.
Yeah, what we're seeing right now is that, as a matter of fact, Neil Reed that works in my office had told me that this morning he was coming down College at rush hour and the road was not an issue, but the queue at Ferris was backed up through the College and Salem roundabout, which tells me that I think maybe our theory is correct, that fixing the intersections is working as well as widening. And if we widened, if we, if we, if we widened Salem, probably, no, I'm sorry, let me restate that. If we improved Salem, then I think there's a good chance that we would go with a three lane cross section, but have four lanes at, right at the roundabout. So, because right now it's two lanes entering. And if we improve Salem, we can make it two lanes exiting as well. And we can do the same thing on the north side, which would just mean that it would have a long taper. So everybody would zipper together. But I've seen that work in other cities very well. Doesn't necessarily have to, you don't have to keep those two lanes all the way down.
Any other questions? Finley, thank you.
Thank you.
Time, I'll look at this. Fin, I call, Finley's usually the first person I call, eight o'clock in the morning, he just expects it now. I think he'd get disappointed if he got to hear my voice right at the start of the day. He's been, he's put in tremendous effort. Again, I appreciate you last time, Finley, but we appreciate Cruz for all the work he did at Salem, I mean.
By one theory, he must have.
At College Country Club and beginning of course, we really appreciate it. We will start back at six thirty. Mr. Hawkers, will I be here tonight?
Mr. Hawkers, will I be here tonight?
Mr. Garrett, it's your right to rule.
It is.
I wouldn't say it by him if I had the chance.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mr. Pruitt.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Here.
Miss Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Cullen.
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of the August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen Council's amendments. Any corrections or changes?
My question to the board.
Air Force Director.
Second.
Have motion second to approve the amendments that submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is six zero, uh, next time we have, uh, the CBC Ladies Law Team, we're going to do that two weeks from now. Then we're back over there. Next up, we'll have, uh, the approval of monthly financial report. Mr. Whittingham.
Looking at, uh, the month of July, um, uh, sales tax was pretty flat for us this month. Uh, it was up like half percent, about as high as you can get, you know, without going the other way. Uh, year-to-date, we're still up just a little over four percent, about four point three. You'll see just above that in our revenue section, we recorded our first month of the lock fee turn back. We already know what that full amount's gonna be, and it's gonna be just over that budget number, uh, one point three. It was one million, three thirty, and some change. So, we'll, uh, recognize that over the course of the next three or four months, as we don't have to pay the city's portion, the thirty-one percent, whatever it is, uh, until we hit that one million, three thirty. Um, you'll also see, kind of down in the latter section there, proceeds from settled assets. We got the million dollars, uh, a little over a million dollars from Conover Court for the City Hall lease agreement. So those funds are, are in hand now. And bottom line for the general fund's looking great. Now, of course, the million dollars is that's the money we just talked about, but take that out, and we're still looking at, you know, almost half a million dollar, uh, positive number at this point for us. I don't really have any other comments on any of the other funds or anything. The, uh, major project funds, last page, are all, all healthy. All the other funds seem to be doing well, uh, unless anybody has any questions or comments. And then Larry, do you want me to talk about the non-uniform pension numbers at all?
Uh, yeah, you can break them off.
Okay. We got the, uh, our latest valuation on the non-uniform pension plan, and several, uh, good pieces of news in it. Some of them we already knew, but, uh, it's got more money than it's ever had, which we kind of knew that, because we get monthly statements on that. Liabilities are also up, which we would expect, but the funded ratio has improved. That was one of the key things we were talking about when we were wanting to revamp the plan, was, you know, we were thirty-one, thirty-two percent funded. Now we're, uh, up about, almost at thirty-five. And their projections are for the next ten years that we're gonna hold steady at thirty-five, due to the changes that we've made. Uh, the, that, and also the investment performance has been better than expected. Uh, stocks and bonds and everything have done well, and then turnover are also a contributor to that. We don't like to lose good people, but we do, and that, that helps the fund, because the city's money stays in, and our liability essentially goes back to zero, until we fill that position, and then it starts to creep back up. Uh, the, the valuation is dated January one, two thousand and eighteen, but since we were able to give them the parameters of the new plan before they issued it, they included that in their projections. And, you know, part of the scope of their valuation is to project. And due to the, the, the structure of the new plan, it's officially no longer projected to run out of money in the foreseeable future. Twenty thirty-three was the year they had pegged, is when it essentially hit zero, and now it's no longer the case. So, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Have, have we looked any more about it in the, where the employee spouse only receives fifty dollars if their spouse dies, it was a form, like that was city.
It's in the new.
It is in the new plan.
Yeah, yeah, if you're hired after May first, and on the new plan, then once you get vested and retire, you have the option to provide an interview for your spouse, if you're working out.
And Miss Mel is the council's representative. Any other questions? Take a motion?
So maybe, second.
Yeah, motion second to approve the monthly financial report coming in July thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. There's no further discussion. Mr. Garrett, you can go.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero. Next up is the portion, Mr. Hawkins, who's normally us, so I will try to limp through it tonight, everybody just be patient with me. This is our standing committees, and we're gonna start tonight with the community development. And, uh, first up is ordinance approving request for permit, club permit for camp man do, Momo. I think I said that right.
Mm-hmm.
Ten eighteen Oak Street, this is to allow them to, uh, proceed with their application with ABC Board.
My question to wait three readings, second.
Motion second, wait for three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero. Any discussion?
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett, I'm sorry, this may.
Say they have to wait, too.
I haven't.
Haven't been, he's gotta go.
My government is.
The ordinance, oh, eighteen eighty-one. Are you ready for the roll call, honey?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Miss Mel?
Aye.
This is six to zero. Next up, we have the ordinance appropriating funding for program year twenty eighteen for CDBG, as the Community Development Lock Grant Program. Kiara, will speak.
Yes, so as you may recall, we received four hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars this year for twenty eighteen. We've already signed the necessary documents, um, that HUD needs to proceed with spending the money, so this ordinance just will allow us to proceed with services and projects for twenty eighteen.
My question to wait three readings, second.
We have a motion, a second, wait for three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
My question for adoption, second.
Motion second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, oh, eighteen eighty-two. Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Miss Mel?
Aye.
This is six to zero. Next, we have the ordinance appropriating funds for the purchase of a new self-serve fuel terminal for the airport. Mr. Zilch will speak to this.
Is this, are you around here?
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, good evening. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. The self-serve fuel terminal that we have right now, um, lots of people pump their own gas, either while we're there or after hours. Um, while it was the top-of-the-line model that was offered when we put in our fuel system, that's no longer the case. Um, still runs on dial-up, so after you swipe your credit card, it may take two or three minutes for the thing to decide that you're good to come pumping gas. Um, the manufacturer now makes an updated unit, had this on the radar for budget last year, and didn't really have a timeline. Found out that the trade-in credit that they're offering for our existing units ends next month, so, um, we'll get forty-five hundred dollars for trading in the one we had, and we didn't want to miss that. So this is gonna appropriate the money, um, no more than seventeen thousand dollars, um, including that trade-in credit. Let's switch that over.
Motion to wait three reads, second.
We have a motion, a second, to wait for three reads. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Motion for adoption, second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, oh, eighteen eighty-three. Miss Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
This is six to zero.
Mr. Zilch is up again. This is to consider to remove a self-service fuel terminal from inventory for the airport, airport. Mr. Zilch.
All right, um, this is part two. Um, this, just gonna, proving this will allow us to trade in the one that we have. You'll see, uh, bottle number, serial number, all that stuff, uh, we'll get forty-five hundred dollars, uh, credit from QT for trading that in on new.
My question that we adopt this.
Remove the self-service.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. I hear a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
In a second, uh, to remove the self-service fuel terminals from inventory. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Next up, we have a resolution amending the master street plan for First Avenue and Oak Street intersection. Mr. Brian Patrick, you speak to this?
He's coming in, yeah.
We're at, uh, master street plan for First Avenue and Oak Street.
Okay, um, I'm in the next minute, because there was a copy of this, and I realized that the last minute, so, and it's all on capacity, I'm out of there, so. Well, um, after we got our master street plan all taken care of, um, just came the lights and properties in play out there, and at Oak Street, where the old racetrack used to be. And we got to looking at the master street plan again, and, um, basically I'm describing as a whiz bone there. You see the little purple, um, piece of minor arterial collector? That was, the idea was to try to collect or connect First Avenue, Second Avenue to come in as a light that's there now. But after further examination, work with the family and street department, um, so the city doesn't have to buy a whole lot of commercial property there. Probably the best idea is to shift the lights to First Avenue eventually. I mean, I don't want that place right now. Basically eliminate this whiz bone, as I'm calling it, idea, and just cut it to First Avenue, and eventually we have a new traffic signal, move it from current location, where it doesn't make a lot of sense to go without racetrack and all that. Get it down there to First Avenue and Oak Street, and who knows if the highway department ever plays with this, maybe we can talk around about it there some time later. Right now, traffic signal. So that's basically what this is in nutshell, and just taking that connector piece off of there, and eventually moving the light, and making First Avenue a minor arterial.
Is this done the resolution?
Yes.
The doc, uh, motion to adopt the resolution, second.
And motion second to adopt the, uh, approve the resolution, amending the master street plan for First Avenue and Oak Street. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The resolution, R eighteen thirty-one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is six to zero. Next, we have consideration to approve request for district use permit for property located at six fifteen Falmouth Street, to allow religious activities in R two A zone, that be the Robinson Center Church Christ is the applicant. Mr. Patrick.
Um, basically, Robinson Center Church Christ has a large two-story historic palace with, uh, six fifteen Falmouth Street. It's currently used as a quadplex. Um, the church just went to the historic commission last night. Y'all probably have seen their large van cover. Um, that's actually the part of the Robinson District right now, and was put up, that did historic commission review. So last night, the historic commission, uh, meeting, they chose this location as the place to put the van cover, and knowing this was all coming together, the, the church chose to seek a district use permit, to make it all legal, land use wise, for that to be used as church religious, um, activity, churching. And, um, eventually, the, the church plans to, it's got, with three renters in there now, Mr. Norris here, pastor of the church, but, uh, they're eventually moving the renters out, and, and hope to renovate the building and build offices for the church. So, best must feel on it, and we've got the folks to speak on it, if you like.
If you have a vote over the public commission, private, with historic.
Yes. They, they approved unanimously to locate the, um, van cover behind the house, that's where they hid away from view, and will be not in the Robinson District, will now be in the old Conway Overlake District. So everybody thought that was a good compromise.
My question to approve this request for conditions, second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve district use permit for Robinson Center Church Christ for six fifteen Center Street. Any further discussion? Not Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is six to zero. Next, we have an ordinance to rezone property located at twelve ninety-five East Journal Lane, from R one to order two. Mr. Lakkis, there, Carol, you're an applicant. Mr. Patrick.
Um, this is property, several properties up for sale out there right now, in East Germans, north of Crossings on the Green, and in that general area. Um, the plank commission took a look at this, and they thought that was a good use, um, to go from R one to R two, without duplexes right now. It could be cut up into six duplexes without building a street, possibly more if you built a street in there, but they're not able to do that. But nonetheless, the plank commission, um, favored unanimously, and so, to prefer to go to duplex.
My question to wait three reads, second.
We have a motion, a second, to wait for three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
My question for adoption, second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Any one?
Quick vote to vote against what was it?
Was it one vote against, or?
One, say it, one.
Say it.
Um, I believe Miss Tucker just felt that she wanted to see more single families there, as opposed to duplex, just for perfectness. And the other, it's standing, I'm not sure why, it was based on financial interest, property review, people, didn't want.
Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, oh, eighteen eighty-four. Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Miss Mel?
Aye.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Six to zero. Next, we have an ordinance to rezone property located south of Irving Drive, north of Winterbrook, phase two, from A one to R one. The applicant is Rush House Development. Mr. Patrick.
This is a continuation of, um, Mr. Pratt's, uh, Winterbrook. It applies with conference of plan, um, seems like a very logical use for the property to continue A one agricultural, which was brought in that way next to the city. Allow it to go to R one, single family, so it can continue phase three, I believe, or up to phase two. No, wait, this, north of phase two, this would be phase three, or Winterbrook, um, just continuation of more, um, single family housing.
My question to wait three reads, second.
We have a motion, a second, to wait for three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
My question for adoption, second.
We have a motion, a, uh, second, to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? If I do this, I'm easily right there, so.
Yeah. Makes the roundabout, that Irving and Salem. You've been arguing.
Yeah, more there.
Yeah.
Mr. Garrett.
Miss Mel?
Aye.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Hey, Mark, can you let the audience know if anybody wants to leave, if they're, if they're agit out of his argument, or?
Feel free to leave.
If I can leave, y'all don't need to stay, I'm hoping, if you don't want to.
It is warm in here, if you don't have anything else on the agenda. If you wanna hurt our favor.
Okay.
What, what was that ordinance number?
The oh eighteen eighty-five.
This is ordinance, rezone property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Tricee Lane and Bill Lucy Drive.
A one.
A one, R one. Larry Frey Allen Hogan is the F. Mr. Patrick.
Uh, again, um, areas, the group conference of plan, the area is showing to be single-family residential, uh, additional neighborhood there, um, seems to make a lot of sense with the growth pattern going on there, basically taking A one, annexed to an agricultural property, and changing it to single-family residential.
My question to wait three reads, second.
We have a motion, a second, to wait for three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
My question for adoption, second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
The ordinance, oh, eighteen eighty-six. Miss Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
This is six to zero. Last item, uh, the New Development, with an ordinance to rezone properties located at three sixty-four, three seventy-five Edison Street, and R two to MF three. The applicant is Stan Stapleton, and I think, Mr. Stapleton's gonna pack it out. If you speak, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Tim Collard, I'm a representative for Mr. Stapleton, uh, two forty Skyline Drive, here in Conway, and, uh, we have a, uh, some more items that we'd like to pass out, it's okay.
Sure.
What it is, it's a flood, uh, the concern of the property is mainly flooding, uh, and flooding downstream from it, which I would, I think one of those passes around.
This is, that's the same.
And, uh, y'all looked at this about a year ago, in different circumstances, and, uh, it was passed over. I don't have, if I don't have enough, I.
We can share.
You may have shared flats, is that a year ago?
Thank you.
You may have to share.
Yeah, we got.
Uh, site drawing, and then if you look at mainly the front sheet, all this, um, we did do a, uh, study on the flood plain, and the flood, flooding of area, and, uh, right now, uh, there is some flooding in the area due to poor drainings, as far as the culverts, and the size of the culverts, and the way the property is, the drainage of property. Uh, we did get a price, uh, Mr. Stapleton did give a price, and he is committed to cleaning out the ditch going south, uh, down.
Down Martin.
Down Martin Street, and he willing to do that, he got a price of about twenty-five hundred dollars to do that, and he willing to do that to help the drainage get on out further. Uh, there is a culvert to the south that's gonna have to be replaced, but it's the city's, uh, going underneath the street. Uh, I'm not sure about that, but the biggest thing that we are looking at right here, is we did, that the city's uses a simplified method right now for detention. I think after the first of the year, y'all gonna go to a different method, which is what they call SCS method, I talked to Mr. Billy, uh, right before, uh, meeting tonight. We based ours, right now, y'all are happy, having everything, go on a twenty-five-year storm. We've got enough detention on this property to do over twice as much of a hundred years. So we're really beefing it up. Uh, we've got over eleven thousand, uh, square feet, nearly twelve thousand square feet of detention area, which is only required to do a twenty-five-year storm, uh, you're only required about four thousand, a little over four thousand square feet. So we're really beefing it up to slow down the water. Now, when you go to the, to the SCS method, after the first of the year, supposedly, Mr. Stapleton has agreed to refigure it on that method, so, and to look at it that method, because he does not want to impact anybody downstream from it, and he wants to do what he can to be a good neighbor. This area, going to MF three, or to the, the new zoning, is gonna be, uh, the thirty-two units, the building's gonna be less area, it's all gonna be more area around it to take up for detention, so we feel like it's the best, totalized possible use for there. It could be used for duplexes, if you do duplexes, then it could be, uh, impacted that way on, on less detention, and stuff like that, because you have to spread out your houses, or area. But, uh, if you got any questions, I'd love to answer them, I know it has to be brief, but, uh, we try to answer any claim we can, but he is wanting to develop this property. He's not wanting to speculate, he is wanting to develop.
Frank, can, can we hold the street to the fire, to do those things that tend to extension, since it's not a condition?
The reason you can't put conditions or anything along those lines, so, I mean, unfortunately, none of them.
I think they can do it. It seemed like this time we've got more of a plan.
And more prepared, you know, right?
Than we had the last time. We didn't have any information on, you know, containment or, or anything last time.
Phil, do you have any questions?
I'll answer any questions the council has.
Can we use our drainage money to replace the culvert that's the city's responsibility?
Uh, you could use pay-as-you-go money for that, sure.
Do we have an idea how much that would be, in that area?
You know how, I think that's a fifteen-inch culvert you're talking about, depending on how far that goes.
I'm sure of that.
That's what I don't know either. It's underground, it's not just a culvert, it's underground drainage, and I don't, it, it could go a long way before it gets to a significantly larger size.
Is that cross Brew Street, or is it cross?
It's, that street to the south.
Brew Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rodney, that's down at the, the corner by you.
There is a connecting storm drain between West Martin and Brew's, but it is along the east curve of Upper Street. Okay, that's where that sound pipe is.
That's where it bottles up.
There is a problem long before it gets there.
To be honest, I think that a lot of the storm drainage in this neighborhood is underdressed.
So we, but we are making a commitment, and Mr. Stapleton's saying, I know you can't overthink the fire, but he wants to make sure he be a good neighbor, and wants to put clean the drainage in there. And he's asked us to, as an engineering company, to figure that, and I've had no reason, obviously, why.
Any questions for Mr. Tom?
Yes. Response, not question, just response.
No, no, we're going to open it up, Rob. No, we're not going to open it up. Questions for Mr. Tom? Thank you, Tim. Now, Rob, the floor's yours.
Thank you very much. The brief ordinance over. How did Yogi Berra put it so eloquently? This is like deja vu all over again. We've done this one year ago. We were here on the same issue, with the same problem, the same proposal. Nothing has changed whatsoever, okay? I don't blame Mr. Stapleton, Mr. Stapleton for wanting to rezon the property and increase its value and move on. I fully appreciate that. If I were there in place, I would do the same thing. And I appreciate Mr. Stapleton being, wanting to be a good neighbor, although Mr. Stapleton is not going to be my neighbor anymore as soon as this gets rezoned, so he will be gone, I will be there. So will be my neighbor, Mr. Marcus Malphia, whose interest I'm also representing, as well as my son Tyler, who is here representing his siblings' interests in my property. I appreciate Mr. Tyler for his effort, and I am not qualified whatsoever to give any countenance to what he said, but I would like to submit to this discussion an alternative engineering report. Unfortunately, I only have two copies. May I give one to the mayor and one to Mr. Vincent? This report was produced by Northwood Rock Engineering Company, and it points out the inadequacies of the present drainage conditions. In concert with that, I would like to pass around a set of photos. As that ditch exists at present time, this is the ditch bordering Mr. Stapleton's property on the south. I took these pictures less than two weeks ago. We're talking about undersized culvert pipes that are poorly maintained, and cleaning them out once is not going to really cause a big change. Here are a set of photos that were taken a little bit over a year ago, and what it looks like when these storm drains do not carry the load. When the water fails to drain out, it floods West Martin Street, which then goes over on Mr. Malphia's property, floods him. The property slopes to the south, then it floods me. I'm the lowest point in the block. I desperately try to keep a eighteen inch storm drain open on the east side of me, but eighteen inch pipe can only carry so much water. I would like to explain that the problem is aggravated by developments on the east side of Denison, the three-story apartment complexes. They drain to the west. There is a twelve inch storm drain servicing the bed block of Denison, and as Mr. Vincent explained, inadequate. Where does the surplus go? On me and Mr. Malphia. The overflow parking lot at the northwest corner of Brew's and Ferris, solidly piped, all drains to the west. So, Mr. Malphia and I are not opposing a rezoning of this property. We are only asking for an assurance from the city that any rezoning and subsequent development will not result in additional flooding that exists right now. In other words, it's bad now, we don't need any more. Now, I am aware that the city is looking to improve the drainage ordinance, and as it was explained to me, possibly by year's end. I would propose that the zoning either will be withdrawn or denied until this new ordinance can take effect and the city cannot hold any subsequent developer, because this property will be sold shortly after it is rezoned. Who is not here, who's not making promises, who will not be held to account. And as I stated last, I think it is unreasonable to allow rezoning and subsequent larger developments that benefit somebody but are at the severe detriment of the residents who are already there, who have been there. Mr. Malphia's been there eighteen years, I've been there thirty-one years. I was there before anything else was there, other than Marcus's house. Now, we can't do anything about the past, but we can influence the future. And our request is that the zoning at this point, under the present condition of ordinance and development stage, be denied or delayed until the new ordinance can take effect and the city can give a reasonable assurance that they can hold developers to the fire and we will not have additional problems. Do you have any questions? I did synopseize the problem in this letter that I would like to hold out and submit to the record. Please. Do you have any questions?
Is Brian still here?
Yeah.
No, sorry. Brian Orfinley, is, is that not exactly what our, the drainage part of our ordinance to say, that you can't push any more water out there than already exists? Isn't that what our ordinance already says?
It does, but it only requires the pond volume to be sized for a twenty-five year event, and it only requires the pond to be sized for a ten year event. And in addition, the methodology is a little outdated. Those are the things that the new drainage manual, which we're working on, and I'm committed to having it to you by the end of the year, will address.
Okay, and so, that new, to clarify what Mr. Pearson said, that new revised drainage ordinance, it will do what? That would help with this situation?
Require the developer to use the SCS method for evaluation rather than the rational method, which is more accurate. It would require him to, probably a hundred year then, rather than just the ten.
Creating more retainage.
Would that make, would that make a drastic difference?
Um, not drastic, no. Twenty-five, a hundred years is four times as much as twenty-five, but the, the rainfall is not four times as much, it's, it's maybe twenty percent more.
Thank you.
If I may ask, Mr. Vincent, at the present ordinance, as it exists now, there's really nothing that can be done to hold a developer to account?
Unless Brian wants to correct me, we, if, if the property's developed right now, then we would, we would require the developer to comply with the existing ordinance.
And the existing ordinance, in my opinion, and the effect it has had in the past, is inadequate, because as I said, I'm already getting flooded. This is not something that I'm imagining. April twenty-ninth of last year, I had a foot of water all over my house, under my house. I had to move cars to keep them from getting flooded out. Again, this has been aggravated by developments in the last twenty years on Denison and all the way up on Brew's and Ferris. Water has to go someplace. The storm drains that exist, the twelve inch storm drains, they don't carry much. We've had some big rains. Okay, well, if it don't go in the storm drain, it'll, it goes down Brew's Street. Yeah? It goes across the parking lot of the duplexes to the east of me, and then water falls into this open ditch on the east side of me, which has an eighteen inch pipe. You know how much water an eighteen inch pipe carries at maximum?
Yes.
Well, there's more water than this pipe. And, you know, in the long run, I see this as the ruination of my property, as well as Mr. Malphia's property. And, you know, development, all good and well, but I'm not going to take the line now. Thank you. Any other question?
Mr. Stapleton, I was thinking when you, when we talked about this the other day.
Let me pose a question.
I was thinking we talked about this the other day, that you mentioned you had worked everything out with, with them.
No, I had talked, I had talked to Mr. Pearson, probably a month ago.
But I was led to believe that.
No, I'm sorry if I, if I led you that way.
That you worked it out.
No, I, no, I did talk to Mr. Pearson, and he did inform me that he would be back to oppose us. Straight up, I, I knew that he was going to be back to oppose us. I'm sorry if, if, if I misspoke, but we're actually showing a two-hundred-year. I'll let Tim explain.
The problem is, we can't make you do it.
No, but you can't, but, but we're, we're willing to go on record, same we're going to do, and through the site plan review, you know, they're going to check everything through the site plan review process. And even if he, he's willing to put it, put it in writing, that he's going to adhere to the, the new SCS method, do it. And right now, we feel like we've surpassed that.
But I still not been waiting for any tape.
The difference in the whole thing is, the word require, the new ordinance is going to require you to do it. This one we have now doesn't require you to do anything. It's up to you to do it, and if you don't do it, there's nothing we can do about it.
And it's not that we don't believe you.
I understand.
You're going to do what you're going to do, but it's to, for reassurance, for the property owners all to be here.
It is required to do it twenty-five years.
Yeah, twenty-five, right.
It's required to, certainly.
But in here, y'all are going to do the one hundred.
That's right.
You know, by word, but, you know.
Technically, be double of a hundred.
Because.
And I'm, I'm going to develop it myself. I can't, I can't take another step forward until it goes to MF3, because the banks kind of look at you, well, you're still R2.
Can, can you wait till end of the year till we get the recording placed? I mean, you waited this long.
I've already waited over a year.
Yeah. Can we hold a new committee till December? He's got either a hold.
I have to look at ordinance and see. It's on screen, so I think you're only allowed, well, look in a couple months, if I can look real quick.
Could we, could we somehow adopt that piece of the new language at a quicker meeting at the end of the year, just that piece of it?
Yeah, that's probably possible.
To do the SCS method.
Put the word require in there.
I mean, you got September to me in the year, you talked about four months.
Big difference from require. The reason is, back now, I guess y'all know, it's been the year. But he, he actually had a person, which I don't know, Mr. Vincent, come to it, he was ill-prepared, come to it, and he said, you know, you can buy it, you take care of it. We'll let him take care of it. So he actually damaged it, you know, I haven't made way to here, so he's actually going over for it.
I'm going to make sure that if, if we develop it, when we develop it like this, there's going to be less water that's coming off of it in any period than what it is right now. It would actually benefit Mr. Malphia and Mr. Pearson if we could go ahead and get the rezoning passed so that we could start the development.
Went back to that, well, that was a good idea, why, why can't we put?
He's, Brian's checking.
Well, see how long we can hold it, and then give.
I don't know if I'm willing to pass is the way it is without the new simulation.
Yeah, that's why maybe we're going to adopt that piece of the new language, next meeting, then the next meeting. Look at this.
So that would be a month from now.
If, if they can get it done, I mean, that's.
I mean, he would just be changing that one piece.
Yeah, I mean, if, if he can, and it's been.
And I guess regardless of what happens with this property, I, I think we really do need to look at some of our drainage money going for this neighborhood.
Yes, to, to respond to one point, I, I hope I don't have to clarify that, just because it's redeveloped does not mean there's less water. There's going to be the same amount of water that falls on that property, it's just, it's not going to, sicker in those grounds, it's going to run off somewhere, okay? So there, there's no less water. Now, to reiterate the point, we look, Mr. Malphia, my friend within, I look to the city to give us the assurance, to give us the guarantee, that's what we look to, that we will not be damaged, that we will not be adversely impacted. That's our point. If we have that assurance, that reasonable assurance, and I, I have very confidence in Mr. Vincent, I have been talking to him, I'm sure he'll tell you. You know, on the subject, subsequently, we're not opposed to rezoning, you know, by Mr. Stapleton or whoever he decided to tell it to. So, those were my two points. When you finish with the photos, I'd like to have those back. Did everybody see them?
Was that April twenty-ninth picture?
The flood is April, well, actually, Marcus, when did you take the flood picture? It was over a year ago.
And we have rain data, that we give you in your package about the same time.
These were taken two weeks ago. That's the condition of that open ditch and, and the tiles that service it. And a lot of water comes out of that.
Okay, any more questions?
Ordinance O three fifty-two, because I remember years ago, two thousand and three or so, there was a ploy people used to use where they would get a plant commission item and then they would not get it before the council for like six months until people forgot about it. So this addressed that, and I thought it might have touched on what we're talking about holding in committee, but basically it just talks about not doing that, that's the applicant's choice to not. It says you can't hold it out there, it wants it to be done.
But we can.
But you can, so it looks like, oh, ordinance O three fifty-two, council, section six, the council reserves the right to hold any items in committee for further consideration. So there's no limits in there as far as.
Chuck, are you comfortable with that?
I'm just sitting here thinking of the alternative. I'm fine with holding committee, but I don't think the amendment to the ordinance to adopt the new metrics, but the drainage should be, then we can deal with it. It does already stand in the law, so I think adopting that.
So they will hold it in committee until the.
Too many.
Yeah, the last meeting of September.
Forget it, y'all meet two times a month.
Yeah.
My question to Brian was whether or not we needed to hold it in committee, because if we knew that we were going to make a change to the drainage ordinance within a few weeks, whether or not that was necessary. His answer was yes, because it, it could be rezoned tonight, and presumably, somebody could submit some development plans tomorrow.
Typically, we, a former city attorney, and I guess current city attorney would agree, people go to the bank, they make pro formas on their projects moving forward, and we can't just change the rules after they've started. And so there's a grace period there, basically, so if you get under the old system, you're under the old system for the most of the time.
So Philly, could you have it to us in the next, at the next council meeting?
Yeah, maybe a week, I mean, it would be, we're near bones on, obviously, it's going to be just a few, you know, many changes that I want to bring to you by the end of the year.
So it might change again, but at least.
It certainly would. One of the, one of the biggest parts of the new drainage ordinance is to help developers out, to help them to know what needs to be submitted to me, and this won't include any of that, but it'll, you know, do the necessary steps, I think, in order to make sure. Just, one thing that I'm going to bring to Brian's head is it's going to make, I think it'd be more heads up to current developments. It, it could be a pretty shift, though, to manage.
Or needs to be done, needs to be done.
Well, yeah, needs to be done, but everything that's.
Well, yeah, it needs to be done, but everything that's already commenced work, would that not be grandfathered in?
It wouldn't be, it's already a process.
Yes.
I know, this is like pretty short notice, I mean, I'm sure, I'm just thinking big picture. They're thinking of works, developments, engineering plans, specs, whatever.
Thing doesn't say, the ordinance referred to doesn't say how long you hold committee. I mean, you could keep holding committee till you see if they can bring it back out again, so it doesn't...
But Chuck, how does that change you if you wait until January you do it?
I guess just notice.
So if we gave him a little longer, gave Finley, so if we went to like the end of October and the first meeting in November, would give you more time?
This just doesn't give him no more time to be able to...
In the public, in the public notice.
And for Chuck, is he comfortable though?
Well, I mean, as far as like... I don't know if like legally, there's necessarily any specific requirements other than what you're proposing right now. I'm just thinking practically.
People that are on the starting...
I'm sure there's multiple developments. I understand if something's already been submitted for consideration or approval, or I get it, I mean, they'll be grandfathered in under the old system, but these products don't just happen. So there's development, grant plans, engineering, all that kind of stuff, and so I didn't know. Put them in a tough spot.
Well, we were going to say that anyway, first of the year.
It would be, that's the other thing, too.
So they should have already known.
And that's a good point, Finley talked about, if we don't pass it with emergency clause, we give it thirty days to take it back, mightn't that be sufficient?
Yep.
So we pass it in two weeks, it wouldn't take effect in thirty days, so that gives a month and a half.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. So...
Take records, make a motion. We hold it in committee?
Hold it in committee, second meeting, second meeting.
Motion in second to hold it in committee for two weeks, all the papers say aye. Two meetings, I'm sorry, two meetings. All the papers say aye. Any opposed? Have a meeting one day?
Hold it until the second.
Yeah, would y'all...
September, yeah.
Just a little higher, just the second meeting of September.
So it'd be September twenty-fifth. September twenty-fifth, September twenty-fifth, September twenty-sixth.
September twenty, so it just needs to make sure that one doesn't have a surge party.
Right out there, if you have any questions, if you have any questions, please stand back here and talk to Brian. All right. Next, we have the Public Service Committee. First up, we have a ordinance appropriating funds for the day board drive pedestrian overpass with the March Correctional Department. Mr. Evans, you can address this.
Mr. Johnson. Council approved contract for Manhattan Bridges from the West Street Overpass. And I need to appropriate the funding for that now, at three-point-four billion dollars. It's coming out of A and P.
Make a motion to wait three readings.
Second.
Motion second, wait three readings, all the papers say aye. Any opposed, six to zero.
Mercy for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt this ordinance, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Which letter?
Yes.
Six to zero. Next, we have the Public Safety Committee. We have consideration entered into the degree of the Commonwealth Schools for School Resource Officer Program for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. Chief Prudential will address this. I don't think anything's really changed from last year.
Nothing's changed, it's just a little bit like getting in front of the council. Everything is actually the same, the principal man on behalf of our eight SROs, Saturday meetings.
Make a motion, remember, three seconds.
Motion second, then we accept this agreement with Commonwealth Schools for our SRO program. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero. Next, we have a resolution to approve the purchase of the body cameras for the Commonwealth Police Department. Chief Prudential.
You here? The train? Well, it's been a long road, but we finally come to a solution for a body cam program. Like we call, this year's budget, we allotted two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to start that program. And we're asking that we go with the Watch Guard Body Cam System under GSA government contract. Just to kind of give you an idea of the long-term effects this will have, starting out, we're going to be able to start this program just with over two-hundred thousand dollars. It's over a five-year period, we can take that out to approximately five-hundred and two thousand dollars. In comparison to other companies that we looked at, Axon, which is formerly NOS Fazer, it comes in at seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand over five years, and then Utility Body Cam, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand over five years. So it's a very expensive project, something that the law enforcement world is, it's just one of those tools that we have to have now. And we found a system that not only has a good body cam, but a good in-car system. So as we buy new vehicles, we put the new in-car system in, we'll still use the existing in-car system that we have that works great for us, no reason to take it out. So we'll wait till the end of life cycle, but we'll replace those. So as we buy new vehicles, I don't, we get the in-car camera system, we'll get a body cam with that. We're going to start out with six-five body cams, so everybody on the street, on patrol, on vehicle, on traffic, SROs, will all have a body cam along that. Thanks for ID department, we were able to get a more reasonable solution for storage. That's what drives most of the price up on these body camera companies, is the storage. And a lot of the companies will not allow you to go outside of their company for the storage before they make most of their money. Watch Guard allows us to do that, and thanks to Aaron, his group, thanks on the mission, we can actually store all day.
Who will handle the redaction for you, Chief?
We will. This comes with the redaction software.
Okay. That's big, isn't it?
That's scary.
This is a good move, IPD, appreciate you.
I will give credit to Major William Tapp, when he was the project manager on this one. So I have to recognize him.
Make a motion for the option, first, second.
Motion in second to approve this resolution for body cam from LAPD. Any further discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
I think it's resolution RET thirty-two.
Slow. Next up, Mr. Foster, to discuss the Land Trust versus City of Copper.
I'm going to pass out, I have visual aids here, kind of put everybody out. So this is just kind of an update on where we're at, passes around.
You get one of these here? Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So we had a, I think that, you know, we had, these condemnation actions are kind of coming to an end. A lot of this that we're having to deal with, some of the expansion, right away acquisition that we had from some of our major projects. We had recently had a jury trial on the, one of the Search Road properties that we acquired. Had a very, very good result out of that for the city. I thought it was fair to the property owner, but also fair to the city, as how the outcome came out. This one is a little bit different in the fact that we're talking a lot of money. The actual damages claimed by the property owners, the Lynn Reckable Trust, the trust given this, Mayor Catherine Lynn, is one million dollars. And I kind of wanted to talk about that. But first of all, I want to let you know that Mr. Pickenbinder, we are ready for trial. We gathered all of our witnesses, you know, they're going to be there, we talked to them, we prepped them, we've got our exhibits labeled and organized, and so we will be ready. And we felt like, you know, also getting this other trial under our belt really put us in a good position to be, to be ready for this one, since it is, you know, a bigger case in the fact that money, money is a lot larger at risk. But I kind of want to set the tone for you, as we're walking into a situation in court, we're really, you know, we're the big bad government, government taking away property. We come in with one hand tied behind our back to start off with. And then we get into situations in which the, almost the jury instructions that are required to be given, and the rules of the road, the decision-making process of the jury hamstring us a little further in the fact that, you know, we have, we have experts as to the valuation of property, but the property owner, their opinion of their property, the value of the property, and the loss or damage to the property carries as much, if not more, weight than our experts. So that's another thing, too. And obviously, I think juries are going to be more sympathetic to property owners in these type of situations, because that's, this is the way it goes. There's several things, obviously, we cannot discuss in there, like added value to a property, or the fact that we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. Those things will, will get shut down really quick and potentially cause a mistrial, so... The other thing as well is it's not a criminal jury trial, the burden of proof, the defendant, in this case, the defendant is a property owner, because we initially initiated the action with the condemnation. And this one was initiated in two thousand and thirteen. So the defendant has a propositively evidence, burden of proof, which is very, very low, it's like fifty-one percent. More likely than not, kind of the property was damaged, how much they say it is. And only nine of the twelve jurors have to agree to that value. So that's kind of how we, how we get to where we are. The diagram that I, that I gave to you, kind of showed you the six, six overpass project, it has an L singer with a roundabout. The property in question is, basically, the Lynn's property is this acreage here, that's, you know, the center of it, the vast majority of it is this detention pond that's there, which is kind of part of the, part of the lawsuit. So you can see, I've marked mine up pretty good, but there's a green line right up here, and that's the property that was acquired for the taking. Their entire property is close to twenty-six acres. The taking involved six tenths of an acre. I think we paid somewhere, well, between that and the two permanent drainage movements that we took, we paid two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which is what our appraiser said that the property was valued at. Their appraiser for the exact same amount of property said the value was at four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, ninety-two dollars. The difference there just is two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars and some change. Our appraiser assigned a zero-dollar value to some of the permanent adsements that was taken, where their appraiser gave a full ten dollars a square foot. So that's kind of the difference there. The rest of their claim gets them up to the million-dollar level. It involves the damage to the remaining property because of the construction project. And so if you can see here, they have commercial frontage along Amity. And according to the property owners and the appraiser that they hired, they're divided up into several lots. And because one of these lots, well, two of these lots are affected by the, by the taking, they're saying that that property is damaged to the ten to three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. If you can kind of see across this being the pond, and across over here, this peninsula sits out, that's where Ms. Lynn's home is. They owned this property for a long time, built this house. Anyway, they're, they're saying now, because of the construction, the house is flooding. And so roughly about two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars worth of damage there. And that was something that kind of came up later in the litigation. Actually, we're set for trial some time ago, and there was some discussion about it. But anyway, we found out about that claim about the weekend before the trial, one day before the trial. So we had to push that back, to be able to really dig into it. And Charles has done a great job of kind of really investigating that particular claim. We've talked to engineers and...
So because of this...
Right.
Business flooding.
That's what they say. Now, we say different...
I remember the last time we was asking, since we had to pay so much for that property, why would they settle us to a lot for that, but they wouldn't do it, right?
No. We have, we feel like, you know, we're talking a lot of money. You're talking about usually in a lot of these cases, we, you know, we tried, like, you know, a case like this, we've obviously talked to a lot of attorneys that have tried cases like this. A lot of times you get into, jury's kind of meeting in the middle. So if that would be the case, you know, we're looking at five-hundred thousand dollars, full value is what they're going to say. Ms. Lynn, we know through deposition is going to say that her property is affected with a ten of exactly a million dollars. And so there's some exposure out there. Now, we, as we mentioned in our preparation, we have a case to put on. We're going to hold them to their burden, and then when it's our turn, we have plenty to put up there. But just wanted to fill you in on kind of where we're at, and the potential liability could be out there with the jury burden.
When will this get a trial?
We're set for next Tuesday.
Next jury trial, right?
Which court?
It's Judge Foster. There's so many over there.
Three C.
Three C. A lot of it has to do with education of the jury through, well, and picking the jury, of course, but our process, opening statements, introducing, it's kind of our theory of the case, and what we believe the evidence will show. And then getting, you know, folks up there, no offense to Finley, he's still around, but, you know, engineers are difficult witnesses sometimes, and so...
That's a bright one.
So, anyway, we have, but we...
I take it personally.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
You think it'd be, you know, that's my, it'd be a problem if you'd be in there, I can have someone else before we're going to court.
Can you be in there?
Yeah, you know, that's my job.
Yeah, oh, yeah, open courtroom.
So we can all turn one.
I mean, I'll be working.
You'll be working?
Yeah, that won't be, that won't be a problem, since I'm on the city council, too.
I'm the city council there, it's open courtroom. Y'all have any influence over the jury? Yeah, that's right, just sit there. But we have entered into negotiations, just to kind of see, I think it's always worth it. I mean, obviously, the city does want to go to trial with its citizen if we don't just absolutely have to. Negotiations really didn't work out. We've got, with the new claim of flooding, there is additional information that we provided to the defense counsel. I think it may warrant him at least talking about negotiating with us again, but no guarantees. And again, you know, we're kind of in a short timeframe at this point. But that's where we're at. I don't know if y'all would be interested in us entertaining that, or if we just want to...
They wanted to negotiate.
So we may have to be... Well, it's, you know, in essence, in their court at this point.
They're for sure getting the two-hundred-something thousand from this property.
So, that's a good question, Ms. Smith. So the two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand and some odd dollars has already been deposited in court, and already, the Lynn's have already picked that money up. That is theirs, no matter what happens, that's what they get. If the jury comes back with a million dollars, that two-forty-eight is still there, that counts towards that judgment, because they're going to determine the value of the taking and any damage to the remaining property. So what we, what we have to focus on is limiting what, what the jury sees as damage to the property.
And if they, if they're awarded five-hundred thousand, that two-forty-eight supply, so...
That's correct, two-fifty.
Any other questions, Mr. Foster? Thank you, Joe.
All right, appreciate you, Joe. If you do have any questions, feel free to call me, that's a lot of information, so thank you.
Following out of the knowledge ordinance, meaning the employee handbook and personnel policy, Ms. Price and Mr. Michael Williams will speak on this.
I'll let Jamie address the purchasing policy. I'll address the other changes. I believe y'all were all given a copy of the changes. Basically, a lot of it is housekeeping. We did take the part, the portion out about the old pension plan, and added it in, added the new pension plan in. We'd like to note that our city attorney did look, reviewed these changes, and he approved all of them. The notice of non-discrimination, the reason that is going in addition, is an additional policy that's in there. When the city agreed with the highway department on a Pado six project, that at some point, we would add this policy in the employee handbook. Most of the notices have my name on it, because that's the way they wanted it, but I put just human resources director in the personnel policy. That's why that changes there. It's been in effect for many years, but we're just putting it in the handbook. The other about job postings, we're just adding the website. The uniform civil service positions, due to a change that we made to the civil service rules and regs several months ago, now the list will run longer than one year, or it can, or there can be two lists, so that's why that portion was deleted. Under personnel files, we just took at-home telephone numbers and just put telephone numbers. On vacation benefits, we eliminated the minimum increment that a firefighter could use of twenty-four hours and changed it to one hour. use at twenty-four hours and changed it to one hour, so every, all employees are treated the same with the vacation laws. Uh, we took out the cash out option, just because it would have taken city council approval to put it back in place anyway, as, as y'all recall, that was taken out a very long time ago, because the city could no longer afford to do that. At some point, if we want to add it back in, it would take council action anyway, so we just want to get it to that handbook. Under the retirement plans, I already mentioned the non-uniform pension, but we did eliminate, uh, the pension plans for police officers and firefighters that were hired, um, prior to nineteen eighty-three, because we no longer have any left.
There were just a few of us alive.
And that, that is all of the changes that I made, and Jamie, I got the changes to the purchasing policies.
I did have a couple of changes, and basically, I, I'm tasked with making sure that Commonwealth stays in line with the Office of State Procurement, so that's what I'm trying to do with these. One of them is just to make sure that it's a procedure more than a policy, to make sure that we did state contact over on RPOs, and give a good audit trail. The other one is a bigger change, uh, is to use, um, procurement co-ops for anything over a hundred thousand. The Office of State Procurement actually uses them without a dollar threshold limit, and so we're being a little more constrictive than they are, I feel like, that we, we may graduate, but it still holds us to five hundred thousand dollars, so. Those are the changes that I made.
Any questions for the. Either of you ladies?
Adopting changes or.
Need a motion to.
Some.
This is.
Make a motion twice, perfect.
Make a motion in the second to wait for three readings, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption in the heart of the town, second.
Make a motion in the second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency calls, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Page one is oh, eighteen eighty-eight. Mr. Lethner?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Bruet?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grounds?
Aye.
Any version laws? Mr. Lethner?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bruet?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grounds?
Aye.
Any other, uh, we are set to close on September thirty, is that right, Jack? Does that sound right? I think that's the best. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Yes, yes, hi, Reg, hi, nice to meet you. Yes, yeah. Yes. Yeah, you take, I'm sorry.